Everyone, please stand and recite the Fledge of Allegiance.
Okay, you doing roll call or not?
I can do roll call here real quick.
Okay.
And I believe last week we started.
Yep. Don Cavalier?
Yeah.
Present?
Here.
Present.
Here.
Eric Brecken has texted. He is running late. Councilmember Clapp?
Here.
Councilmember Alt?
Here.
Councilmember Hibma?
Yeah.
Councilmember Fisher?
Here.
Council.
Here.
And Mayor is here.
Okay, we got a few items on our regular agenda. The first one is 3.01 Resolution to appoint Joseph Scholz.
Shaskin.
Huston as Ward One Councilmember. A motion approve this resolution.
Move.
Motion by Don. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Henry. Any discussion?
Is the public allowed to discuss this at this special council meeting?
Sure.
That would be, if there's any discussion from the council, then open the, it would be discussion from the floor.
So I can have discussion from the floor?
Yes, sir.
I, no discussion from council? Yes.
Yes, I'd like to bring something forward to the attention.
Have you state your first, last name and address, please?
My name is Bishop Jensen. I reside at 314 Leonard Avenue. I guess my biggest concern here is that we're practicing process without process. I did attend the Ways and Means Committee meeting because I did fill out an affidavit for Ward One. Ways and Means was pushed through very fast without interviews. I think the Ward One has the right to know that, that the affidavits that were brought before were not re-interviewed, even though a new council lady was seated at the at-large position, as well as during the first affidavit for the at-large position where you guys are classifying our interviews to count for this ward positioning of Ward One being completely separate. It's mind-boggling that you guys would find it fitting to place somebody in Ward One without hearing from Ward One constituents. And I feel like you're shorting us as a ward, being from Ward One, I'm speaking as a constituent. Also, other people have come forth, they have shared with me that they also do feel it is a railroad process in which this council is undergoing to place new council seats, and it's very apparent. So without hearing and burloading your new council seats on the candidates available and allowing all of the candidates in council to cast a vote adequately and accurately just seems like fair process. And I feel like the council has really lacked fair process here, which is a further example of this council as a whole as of late. There's a lot that is being worked on and being done, but nothing to show for it. And most of the city has come forth in agreeance to communicate not only to the council directly in the past at other council meetings, but to people looking to run and try to seat themselves to help better. Now, my second, out of the three things that I'm going to cover here right now, because that was the first, is the council is lacking their due diligence process. If you guys didn't want the job, maybe you should consider resigning yourselves, not hearing us speak as affidavits that applied for the position. But my second point is, is now you guys are selecting somebody for Ward One who doesn't have a longstanding history with Crookston or Ward One, which is awesome to hear new voices. But as of recently, we've had new voices come into this city's small politics and be threatened. Yes, I did say threatened. Threatened to the point where they want to step down in fear of their families being their greatest concern. That speaks volumes for Crookston's council and the current councilmen and women that sit on it. And that also speaks volumes for the community of Crookston as a whole, that our small government is constantly falling apart due to what we that are from here identify as idle threats, but are serious threats to prior Ward Number One, I'm sure, as well as Jeff here before us, as well as other people that have come in in the last five years and have found their way out the door very fast. And so I would also like to go into now point three. The authoritarianism that is witnessed here in our small council in Crookston is beyond what I have seen in even larger communities. And it poses a general threat to our democracy, not only here locally, but as a nation. The authoritarianism in which we see here on this council is shameful. And I ask that you guys go back and follow due process, re-interview any affidavit that comes forward. And I also ask that maybe you consider stepping down yourselves if you've sat either too long or don't want to take the time to understand. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, it's a roll call.
Councilmember Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember?
Aye.
Councilmember Alt?
Aye.
Councilmember Hibma?
Aye.
Councilmember Fisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Briggs?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. 3.02 Resolution to accept the resignation of Jeff Schubridge effective September 5th, 2025. I have a motion to accept this resolution.
Move, Your Honor.
Thank you. Don, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Clayton, thank you. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Is there room for public discussion on this topic?
You had your chance to speak up here prior.
It's a separate, it's a separate issue.
Separate issue, sir.
I'm going to keep them to the issue, sir, out of respect.
Come on up, sir.
My name is Bishop Jensen. I reside at 314 Leonard Avenue in Ward One. With our current director stepping down, I'm just curious as to what is going to be our timeline for a new director's placement and how that is going to look as far as this community goes to expect a timeline. So I would like that to be discussed and brought forward in any discussions in the matter of the resolution to let him go. And is he going to help place the new one?
Discussion is, we have a discussion following. So on the agenda tonight.
Okay. Just with the prior with this council of skipping through, I want to make sure that there's actually discussion.
Yeah, 3.03.
Okay. The constituents would like discussion from the community's board.
That's reasonable.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Clapp?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Hibma?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Excuse me. And Councilmember Briggs?
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Okay, the next item is discussion only. 3.03 is discussion regarding interim city administrator for the city of Crookston. Now, it's decided that we would have Darren be the interim?
Yeah, mayor member, mayor members of the council. Chief Selsler has full qualifications to fill the interim slot. He has a longstanding history with the city of Crookston. He's got 22 or 23 years with the city. He has approximately 12 or 13 years in administration and leadership within the police department. He does hold a master's degree in leadership, which is very similar to the public administration master's degree that I have. He has graciously accepted or offered to step forward to help lead the city during, as an interim basis, while a search for a permanent replacement is taken. My time with the city, I have absolute full faith and confidence in the police chief, and I believe that he would be well-suited with the staff that he has at the police department to be able to take on the additional responsibility and maintain operations at the police department. He has an excellent staff there, and that would be my recommendation moving forward.
Do we have the discussion as far as increase of pay tonight, or would that be consensus?
That can be a consensus. Tanner could draw up an agreement after the fact for ratification at the next meeting. The normal, a common practice is an interim receives this pay that the outgoing administrator would receive.
And I guess I was just looking at 15% above his salary, so that'd be.
I kind of have an issue with 15%. I guess if he's going to put in and do the job, I think he should be paid at the rate of 50 last administrator was at. And that's just my thought. I don't, I don't think it's fair to give somebody the full responsibility of the position that he's doing and then only give him 10 or 15% of the salary to do it.
Just for clarification, for clarity purposes, 15% that the mayor is recommending and my current salary are within $1,000 of each other.
Okay. I mean, whatever's higher than, I guess, that's, your salary's higher than the 15% and we should go with that.
I believe mine is higher by a few hundred dollars a year.
I would support that.
Yeah, I would support that.
And then, would it be just worth discussing who's going to be having to step up and take over Darren's responsibilities?
Yeah, that's going to be a lot of work.
I mean, I think it's fair to then pay that person.
I believe that the best person to speak on that matter is Chief Selsler. We have discussed that. He has, he has expressed a desire to maintain control at the police department with the added hour and have additional city hall hours to handle city operations.
I mean, once, once he steps in to the interim, then he can probably.
See what actually.
Do what he wants to do with that situation.
In conversation with Darren, you know, first thing in the morning, he would probably be at PD for an hour or so before he'd come to city hall. I guess I was okay with that. I mean, he is the chief of police.
Yes.
And he's got complete confidence in Nate that can run the day-to-day, so.
That's what I was going to say.
And I, and I support that too. And I guess it doesn't have to be now, but I think that's something to at least look at once we get into it, see the reality of it, is, is that person doing extra? And should we be looking at that?
In anticipation, we, Darren and I have already begun meeting to bring him up to speed on various projects, and he's been accompanying me with meetings with other department heads to ensure that he is up to speed.
So consensus is to match the outgoing salary of our current city administrator. Everybody in agreement?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. All right, 3.04 is discussion regarding recruitment options for the city administrator position. Me, I was thinking, instead of trying to search for him right away, maybe we go through the league? Have them get it out there. They would put it in what on Indeed and wherever else?
I mean, I think it's worth at least trying before we spend another 40,000 to 60,000 dollars to try to recruit people. I mean, at least put it here and see if we can find local or people within the area that may be interested in it.
Have we used the league prior?
No, we never, never have used the league.
I mean, does it, does it, does it cost anything with the league, does it?
No.
I think it's just.
Can we, can we do what Harkins suggesting is get it out on Indeed and stuff like that? And then also go through Indeed and try that, and then?
Yes. My recommendation, understanding my time here, I would recommend someone from the Midwest, someone at least regionally local. However, League of Minnesota Cities, ICMA, the professional organization for city managers, North Dakota, South Dakota, League of Cities, Iowa, and Wisconsin. I think that would cast a good regional net moving forward. And I think, I think you would likely get, there's been a lot of movement amongst city managers in Minnesota, Wisconsin in recent months. So my belief would be that you would likely get several candidates with that net.
And then run it through Tiana?
Yes, ma'am.
So, once, once the applications come in to our HR department, do we, as a council, get the, every applicant that comes in, do we get maybe to view them? I mean, I wouldn't mind that.
I think if they.
I think if they meet the qualifications.
What?
Or at least meet the minimum qualification.
I mean, I, I guess I'd like to see them all, whether they need or not. And we could discuss each one and granted, we can, I, I just don't like the fact right now that somebody feeds it to me and whether they think or don't think that they need the qualifications.
Well, I was just thinking if it was like Jimmy, who just graduated from high school, is playing in the application, is like.
Well, for, for sure, but we can, we can also just, we can go out as well. I mean, I'm not saying that we have to interview them all, but I mean, I'd certainly like to see the application.
Yes, I'm okay with that. The other, the other issue is, is that before we submit this to the league, we should decide on what range of salary. And just looking at around the region here, I think we should go between 140 and 160.
Well, is there, is there some kind of a?
I just had Tiana pull up, like, what East Side, Eighth River.
She had East Grand, Grand Rapids, the George Lakes, Boston, and that range between those five was 119 to 158. So there is quite a range even there.
Very immediate for that.
And with that, I know, I know from, as professional acquaintance, you know, the East Grand Forks City Manager just hit an annual review this month. I'm not sure what may or may not have happened at that juncture, but I know up until this review, his salary was below three of his department heads. So any, the salary that was listed there may not be a good reflection on the region.
She didn't state what Darren's salary was. She just started with, starting to then rate it was.
Because was Bemidji in that study?
Uh, no.
So you just got a new one, and that would be, that would, I.
I think she gave us ones that were similar in size.
But there, the reason why I bring up Bemidji is I think you just hired one within the last six months, maybe.
Okay.
And the reason why I bring that up is that that salary might be more reflective of what new.
Do you know if they were hired in that?
I'm sorry?
Do you know if they were hired in that?
I don't.
You can always get it.
But then if that one could be included in the range, then that might be a more updated.
I'm just wondering, are we on a timeline to submit this, or?
I mean, I think we should get going as soon as we can. I mean, I know we've always talked, we don't like to look for an administrator in the middle of winter or whatever, but I mean, I think we need to get one in here as soon as we can.
So back to my question, are you comfortable with 140 to 160?
In answer to your question, Councilmember Clapp, Bemidji in June of 2025, the Bemidji City Manager salary was, for 2024 was 158, 868. And for 2025, Bemidji was 175, 2.
So now granted, they got a lot more going on than we do, but.
They're a bigger community.
That's, that's in perspective of.
I think fine with.
So we're good between 140 and 160 starting, or?
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Pay a little more to get somebody with the experience and wanting to come here for that.
So then also, I, I think we should start to put out feelers for, I think we should go with what we're talking about going with now. Let's get a feelers out for an agency that maybe we want to retain down the road if, if, um, if we're not successful in finding one the way we're talking about now.
Alternative.
I mean, I'd like to have the option of having a, I don't know how many out there anymore. I mean, I know that one company doesn't do it anymore.
Baker Tilly's recruitment arm has, in the, has diminished greatly. SGR, Strategic Government, that's who handled our last recruitment. SGR, Strategic Government Resources, a nationwide firm. The South Central Service Cooperative, they're in southern Minnesota. They're very similar to the northwestern cooperative that we have here. They have a team dedicated to recruitment. Their lead recruiters are Wendell, Sandy, and Mike Humple. I can reach out to them. They are very Minnesota-specific. They know Minnesota very well. And Mike has his fingers on the pulse of pretty much most of Minnesota, so.
Is it possible for him to come in and give us their spiel and, for the council and?
I can reach out to Mike tonight or first thing in the morning.
I mean, I don't know if we want to pull the trigger right away, but something to, if, if there's a few out there, if they could come to council and give us their, their.
SGR is going to be one of the pricier options. South Central Service Cooperative would be more, much more reasonable in costs. Quite honestly, most search firms are going to throw the net in the same places. So you're going to get a very similar pool.
So.
As long as you get, as long as you cast an adequate net, you'll get a similar pool.
I pulled this hiring a city manager toolkit off of the League of Minnesota Cities website, and it says that the League of Minnesota Cities will also help us advertise in other states.
Yes.
So I think they're going to be able to help us a whole lot and for free.
Yeah, another resource.
Yeah, because we were talking about kind of regional, with Dakotas, Iowa, Wisconsin, Minnesota.
Yeah.
I don't know. I guess what I'm looking at is, you know, someone that has been through a Minnesota winter or a.
Midwest winter, yeah.
Midwestern type elements through this area.
Don't knock out the Uppers in Michigan. Their winter tolerance is pretty hearty.
So, I don't know. I get where you're coming from, Dwayne, but I would, you know, maybe, I guess we'd know in a short order if we're getting candidates.
Yeah, I'm not saying, don't make me if we don't have anybody come November or something like that, or if nothing's moving along come November, we might have them.
Then, then maybe start going to Plan B?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we want to say listed and tell field, or do we want to put a deadline on there and then?
Well, I think we should put a deadline on there and try to see if we can.
Wendy, did you research, does the league recommend any length of time or a deadline?
I mean, why don't we just reach out to the league and talk to them and say what, ask them what we should be?
Sure.
That might be.
A normal practice is a 30-day, a 30-day posting with a deadline. The rationale for that is many city managers are going to wait till the very last minute to put their application in. They don't want to have their name.
Out there.
Run the risk of tainting their current position.
And they want to.
So they'll wait till the last minute to put their name in, and if there is no deadline, that creates a lot of ambiguity that people say, they, candidates will interpret that as not having the wherewithal or the firmness to set that deadline. So that it becomes a minor, not, not a red flag, I'd say a yellow flag if there's not a deadline. There's no, nothing that says you can't extend if you don't get a good pool. It's been happening more and more.
Right, or just relist it, right?
Yeah, because the, the pool of city managers is shrinking by the month.
I agree with the deadline, but we gotta be cautious. We don't want to rush it either. We want some good applicants.
We can always reopen it, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pardon?
We can always reopen it.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
We have a, a proper job description, Morgan, when this was originally listed.
For the previous one, I can't, I would think that we could...
Yeah, I would imagine. We've, we've had one for a while.
Yeah, but, but when we, when we have it for a while, that doesn't necessarily mean it's functional.
Look over this, the job description.
Yeah.
It is, it is still fitting.
Yeah.
Can we, can we get the job description emailed to us so we can all refer, provide feedback if any, like, you know, Wendy here has a great deal of knowledge in that area, so.
Sure.
Mark it to you.
So maybe just wait, hold off and submit this out there after Labor Day?
Yeah.
Contact the league.
It's a good time.
Well, I mean, start contacting the league now and asking them their recommendations and what the process is, and then the next meeting, we get together and approve of this
Is it possible by the next meeting, we have what the league recommends?
job position.
I don't see why not.
Oh, sure.
Let's, let's go with that.
So do we have Tiana work, work with the league?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
That's, that's still Jeff's area of who he wants to get to work with, so.
I, I just emailed Tiana, just a reminder, just email the council the job description.
But I mean, what, all the applicants are going to come to Tiana, correct?
That would be the most appropriate.
So should we have her be the lead on work, working, reaching out to the league, or?
Sure.
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
But if she needs support, we're happy to help, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So if she needs support, you'll jump in, Wendy?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, that's the direction we want to go with it. Any other discussion on it?
I mean, in the meantime, is it still okay if these outside companies that might, I mean, and just can they come in and give their spiel of what they would provide, and if it gets to that point, we could, we have, we have that information readily available?
I think the best, my opinion would be the best course of action on that would be to have that in a back pocket, because it would send a conflict, if you have it currently posted, it would send a conflicting message, both to candidates and to the firm, recruitment firms, and it also creates a cloud over, if you already have an applicant that you all, that you end up selecting, and then halfway through the process, you've hired a firm, then you create, you create a cloud over, did the firm recruit them or did they recruit themselves?
Not saying hire, just still just getting their information, so if we do get to that point, we don't have to start that process and take a month to figure out who we're going to get at that point. We would know right away who we're probably going to go with when we got to that point instead of, you know, being behind them all again, but if we got to that point, not saying we're going to choose them, just want to hear them.
So if we go that route, just...
Just kind of want to get some cost ideas.
Yeah, we could get some cost ideas and, and again, not saying we're going to do it, just want to hear what they offer, and so if December comes, January comes, November comes, whenever we decide that our current process isn't getting us to where we want to be, we can, we can just go with the, the companies that came in to give us, you know, at that time, we can vote on who we want to go with at that time.
So if we're out there searching and we're going with the league, does that kind of throw us in the, the league and competition with a search firm or not?
If you were using both, then, then you have a issue, but you wouldn't use both.
You wouldn't use both at the same time. One search would come to an end, and then it would re, you would have a new kickoff with the firm.
Yep.
I mean, it's just a thought, not, not, I, I just don't, I want to get somebody in here as soon as we can, and if we, if we find out that in this first process, it's not doing what we intended it to do, I just don't want to have to go through a month or two to try to figure out who we're actually going to go with and, and then start two months later. That's the only thought process I'm having with this.
Would these search firms, instead of being here in person, would they rather do Zoom? I, I don't know.
Every firm is going to have their own preference.
Okay. All right. So move forward with the league and also possible search firms out there. Further discussion on this? Okay, consensus is to move forward with League of Minnesota. Also looking into possible search firms, and everything kind of runs through, have Tiana run it through with the league. She can work with the league. Wendy's willing to help out. And then she'll also send, Tiana will send an update on the current job description for city administrator.
Sounds good.
All right. Anything else with this discussion? Okay, we are adjourned.